Of August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, five thirty, county commissioner meeting. At this time, I will give the implication and lead the pledge. By your head, please. Before we come to you tonight, yes, for you to have your hand over us as we do the business of the county, help us make the best decisions for our constituents and for the county as a whole, but we ask you to have your hand over all the first responders and the fighters over in Ukraine, Lord, and all these things we ask. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just. David, he hit?
Here it goes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We do have two additions. One is the twenty-three, twenty-four law enforcement salary assisted award agreement, and the second is simply entering private property. But Mr. Crowe will capture the first one, and I will capture the second one under discussion.
Okay. The chairman, I move we approve the agenda as amended. Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries. All right. Troy, you ready?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. What we have for consideration tonight is ordinance number twenty-two-three-twelve. This would be approval of a comprehensive plan amendment zero-two-four-seven, which was approved by the zoning board on June twenty-second. This is on property on the west side of four-forty-one north, being Mr. Williams' district.
All right. Oh, so we'll open the public hearing at this time. Is anybody here to speak for or against this project?
Good evening, commissioners. Bill Menedee with Menedee Engineering. Wasn't sure if we needed to do a presentation on this, but as Troy presented, this is a, I guess, the first one is, is the zoning change. We also have a comprehensive land use change as well. But this is a project to, or excuse me, a request to change the land use and zoning on a piece of property that's approximately twenty acres in size. We're going to rezone a portion of it to support a mobile home park. We have been working with the economic development personnel and received a lot of support in that regard, and we've also got support from ten surrounding property owners and/or business owners within the area. So this, this will allow us to design a mobile home park that'll, that'll be featured here to, to help what we're seeing as a, a demand in a housing community where the workforce, not necessarily workforce housing, but, but a, a housing option that, that is a little more affordable for, for some families that are seeing a, a need for that when they're coming to the area and getting new jobs and stuff, as we see all these people moving to Florida. So with that being said, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but both of these items are, are in regard to the mobile home park.
Or y'all have any questions?
This is one up on four-forty-one, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir. There's two roads that lead to it from four-forty-one, West Cason Road and Northwest Farley Place. It'll be at the end of both of those streets. So we'll have two access points.
My question would be for Troy. Troy. Okay. You want to ask it now, or you want to?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Troy, this, this is the first I knew about this. That piece of land got a lot of wetlands on the backside of Ottawa.
Yes, sir.
Since it was approved by the building and zoning board, they've done what they should do, just the land use.
Yes, sir.
And zoning change.
Yes, sir, and it was, it was, we've had, we've had a few meetings with the owners and the engineer, and there is some concerns from the county engineer, and everybody's been made aware that those items will be addressed when the site and development, there'll be another zoning approval for site and development approval, and that's, I think everybody's aware that there is items that will need to be addressed regarding wetlands and some traffic, a couple of traffic issues. So there were notes given on this, even though that's not the item at hand right now, it's just the land use and zoning.
Yes, yes.
But there, those comments were already raised, that they'll be dealt with during site and development. Yes, sir.
And also, Oklahoma Home Park, this side, there's state regulation has to be met too also.
Yes, sir.
That has nothing to do with what we're doing or not.
Yes, sir. This is just changing the land use and zoning tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
What, Mr. Williams, what was that you said right there? I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't.
I understand, no, you're fine.
I, I, I just said that state, a regulation that goes along with this.
I got you.
And that we wasn't addressing those tonight, just the, just the zoning change.
Okay.
All that come, come with the next phase.
I understand, thank you.
And I, and I believe if I'm correct, they can correct me. If I'm wrong, I think we supplied that to the applicant, the statute that applies to the, the state regulation rules. Yes, sir.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Anybody else have anything, want to speak for or against this?
My name Willie Montgomery, I'm concerned on Pillsbury Road. For the last fifteen or twenty years, I've been out of, I've counted commissed to, to pave our road, Pillsbury. It's a, it's a by-through road, a more road, it connect to Brockos and, and serve the whole neighborhood on the north end of it. We had two washout on both ends, that we couldn't go in and get blocked off on one end, and the next following year, the upside of the road got washed out. So, and, and we in the neighborhood, and our neighborhood, we got a bunch, I got quite a few elder folks there, and concerned on, we getting blocked in and can't get out, emergency can't come in and help us, but.
Sir, are you, are you speaking on this issue with the mobile home park?
No, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's on my hand.
Yeah, you, you'll need to get, I, I, yeah, this is a whole different subject.
Okay, but, but y'all let me know when I need to come up.
Okay.
I apologize.
Yeah.
If I'm out of hand, hey.
Yeah, I think you're on Pillsbury.
Trying to figure out where Pillsbury was.
Pillsbury is up off of Moore Road. That's that project that we, we do the drainage and stuff.
Green, yes.
Well, it's coming. Well, we, we, we give for explanation, the engineering is, what'd you say, ninety percent complete on that project right now?
Yes, sir. The engineering is ninety percent complete. We think we'll go to construction in the fall of this year.
Last time I told them, I told them the fall of the year when it'll be out for construction, and we had an update today on the, on the plans, that it was about ninety-six percent complete. Okay, we, we got a public here, so is there anybody else here to speak for or against this ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-twelve? Not, we'll close.
Chairman, I move we.
We'll close the public hearing this time.
Sir.
Go ahead.
I approve ours number twenty-two-three-dash-twelve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of pull my vote out of this.
So you're gonna abstain?
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna stay out of it because I have talked to the owners about doing work there, so I don't, y'all, y'all vote however y'all want it.
Okay, I got a, Commissioner Phillips will abstain. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-twelve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Okay, Troy, you want to?
Yes, and that, that's the land use portion of this. The other ordinance of twenty-two-three-dash-thirteen would be approval of Z zero-six-one-two, which is, was also approved by the planning and zoning board on June twenty-second, and that would be for the, for the zoning portion of it, which would change it from residential mobile, RSF slash MH to RMHP, residential mobile home park.
So we'll open the public hearing for ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-thirteen at this time. Anyone here to speak for or against that? I think this covers the same thing you spoke about a while ago.
Yes, sir. Again, Bill Menedee, the, the only thing I want to add in regard to the statements made by the commissioner here about the wetlands and stuff, we understand that, and we'll have a wetland scientist delineate all that, we'll have a survey done, we'll do stormwater management through Swannie River, and, and of course, work with Public Works as far as the ingress and egress is concerned, and we're, we've also talked with the utilities. So we, we're aware of that, I just wanted to put that out there on the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak for or against it? We'll close the public hearing at this time. Do I have a motion?
The chairman, I move we adopt ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-thirteen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Commissioner.
I'm also going to sustain out of this one too, because it's all of the same piece of property together.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Given where we're going to the next segment, just curiosity, with our new guidelines that we put into developing these subdivisions and what have you that we just recently, that affect this in any form or fashion?
It will with any public, if the infrastructure's ever desire to be public.
How about their pitching ponds?
It will, yes, sir.
That part will, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Go.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two ordinances for adoption hearings this evening. The first is ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-nine relating to updating our fair housing code. You'll recall a few weeks ago, our grant administrator advised us that in order to remain in good standing with the folks who give us the grant money, we need to keep our housing code up to snuff. He had a proposed ordinance for us, but we already had existing codes, so I had to take the existing code and the proposed ordinance and make the updates, and that is what twenty-two-three-dash-o-nine represents, recommending adoption of twenty-two-three-dash-o-nine so that we can continue to receive the generous grants to the county.
We'll open the public hearing at this time for ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-o-nine. Anyone here to speak for or against that? Not seeing anyone, we'll close the public hearing. Can I get a motion for twenty-two-three-dash-o-nine?
Move motion to accept ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-nine.
Second. So I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second item I have for adoption hearing is ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-eight. This is an ordinance that will extend the two-cent additional fuel tax out to twenty-thirty-three. This is the same assessment that's existed in the same amount since nineteen eighty-six. You periodically extend it, it's never not been extended. We have to have the ordinance adopted before the end of September, which is why it's on your agenda for this evening. We're recommending adoption.
Okay, so we'll open public hearing at this time for ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-o-eight. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this? Not seeing anyone, I'll close the public hearing this time. Do I have a motion?
The chairman, I move we adopt orders number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-eight.
I'll second that with the statement, "We're not raising fuel tax."
This is not an increase, the same tax since nineteen eighty-six.
All right, so we have a.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Chairman, I move we adopt consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion to adopt consent agenda and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Mr. Kirby.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have five items for your consideration, inclusive of the walk-on. First item is charges for travel ball. Meeting or two ago, we promised to come back with an updated version of the current rules as it relates. This is an important issue that got brought to our attention, and we want direction on it moving forward. This will be part of your package in September, where Clint and I will work on getting the revisions buttoned up. To eliminate some confusion, recreation leagues are under Babe Ruth State Rules. Rag leagues are under Babe Ruth. We talked about excessive use of facilities by travel ball organizations due to the increasing number of teams. We have rules in place. Told you we will be updating them and bringing them back for your blessing. Tonight, current terms and conditions are on travel ball only, not rag ball. There's a lot of feedback from the public with some confusion. Number one, organizations' participants must consist of seventy-five percent Columbia County residents. Number two, organizations must provide proof of residency five days prior to facilities. What's proposed is the organization's participants must consist of seventy-five percent residents as is or registered in Columbia County schools. So basically, what we had a lot of feedback, we work in Columbia County, our youngins go to school in Columbia County. We don't think it's reasonable to pay twenty-five dollars per team to play travel ball if because our children throw out the seventy-five percent rule, okay? So, Mr. Hollisworth, you brought this to our attention?
Can I explain why, I think? It was brought to my attention, and, and I did want to make sure that the children that go to our school benefit the county in some way, which we love having more children here, because we got more things for them to do, but, but we receive, our school system receives money for every student that comes here. So it's not like they're coming in, using our school, and using our baseball field, and not paying, not benefiting our school system and our county. So, and, and in my opinion, it's a whole lot easier. Like, if, if I say I live at three-ten Southwest Green Oak Way, the only way for you to figure that out, or my kid lives there, there's really no way to know if he lives there. He could live with his mama in Orlando, you don't know until you go and watch me or go to my house. And to me, this other rule, we're going to put both in, I guess, but in this other rule is much easier. You present an enrollment, all you got to do is one piece of paper. I'm enrolled in Columbia County Schools, my child, then the child's good, because it has the child's name and everything. So to me, it's a lot easier to prove that you are a student than it is to prove you live somewhere, because you could have a grandmother here and say, "My, my son, my, I live with my grandmother." There's no way to really test that. To me, it's an easier way all the way around. I'm done.
So we need a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Square, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a motion?
Move, second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item, reclassification of Secretary Two to Animal Control Officer. This is a new business for us. I promised you this morning, it looks like we're very much on track to be operational October one. I'm requesting a very minor change. Once again, this is brand new, we're just putting the team together, going through the process. Currently authorized in animal control are three officer positions and one Secretary Two position. Pay grade, Secretary Two, sixteen forty-eight, thirty-four-two-seventy-eight. A new position, which is just one more officer, nineteen thirty-five, forty thousand three-ninety-three. This ensures, the more we got into studying and guys, this is going to be a moving target until it gets leveled out, we recognize it's not wise not having everybody cross-trained for this business. Basically, I'm requesting a motion to approve the reclassification of Secretary Two to Animal Officer with a pay grade of forty thousand three-ninety-three.
The move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Kevin, can I revisit what we just did? I'm so sorry, but I'm glad y'all left either a citizen or enrolled in schools, because there are people that homeschool, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
So we're leaving in.
That's the reason.
That's what you're catching.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I, that's a good deal. I just want to make sure that I was clear on that. Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir. The next item is a housekeeping grant from DEP utilized to assist to the cost of litter removal on our county roads during the mowing process. Ground amount is ninety-three-seven-fifty, the same as last year's. Requesting a motion to approve and execute grant contract in the amount of ninety-three-seven-fifty for litter removal.
The move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
The chairman, when Mr. Kirby get to it, number four, I want to revisit number three, something about solid waste.
Okay. Want to do it now? Let's do it right now.
Perdomino, four, yeah.
Boy, we, we know that we have been estimate, estimate that we have probably about thirty years left, thirty, thirty-five years left on the current landfill. There is a, a parcel of property that is just east of the landfill, and I think we could buy a portion of that property, we wouldn't need it all, but we could buy a portion of that property, because you got to have a home for, it might, it might be something completely different in thirty years of how you dispose of garbage, but let's face it, where you, where are you going to spend, uh, site another landfill in Columbia County? And I, I just think that we need to look at buying a portion of that, that available land to have for future use. I'll be long gone by then, but somebody else will be here.
Me and Mr. Kirby's had that conversation also, and I agree with you a hundred percent. Kirby, go ahead.
But only, but for, only for Columbia County ways.
Mr. Chair and Mr. Williams, actually, after we had these discussions, we're in the environmental review process right now of the two potential parcels. One complete parcel, or it's split basically in two. We do have the piece immediately to the east that joins our current property, potential wetland issues. I'm wading my way through the feasibility of it, but I will be prepared to inform this board of that in the immediate future of what our stance is, if you may.
And it's the sale now, and we can't just mess around and let it be sold, and then we're locked in at that one site. Once it's gone, it's gone, you know what I'm saying, speaking?
I agree a hundred percent. Sir.
Okay, before I get started on this next one, I want a point of clarity. This is out of your intermodal park. If you recall, we had to piecemeal this job together based on funding. We never let the project till the funding's available. So Jones Edman was our engineer of record, our designer, our permitter, et cetera. Dewberry is construction, engineering, inspection service. Wharton Smith is our contract manager at risk, our C Mar. So you have three entities dealing with that big job out there. But at the end of the day, we're still not exceeding our thirty-one million, but we kind of had to back into this whole project. That being said, after negotiations with JEA, at the North Florida Intermodal Park, they provided us a task order with a proposed rate of four ninety-four-two-ninety for project manager, administration, meeting, site observation contract, and O and M manual record drawings. So you got the EOR, which is Jones Edman, Dewberry, CEI, Wharton Smith, to ensure we don't go over budget. I'm requesting a motion to approve task order from Jones Edman in the amount of four ninety-four-two-ninety for services.
The move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Final item I have, Mr. Chairman, is Commissioner Phillips reached out. He has a cemetery in his district. He's asked me to go and spruce it up a little bit for us. I communicated with our attorney. He said that legally we have that position, but I do need to ask your permission as a board to enter that cemetery.
Mr. Kirby, haven't we done some of this in the past?
We have. There, there's been some, and I'll refer to Mr. Foreman, if you may.
So when there's an abandoned cemetery, we can go in about once every five years, and we can work, work on the property, and you assess a lien against it, of course, by the cemetery, but that's what statute allows for, but only once every five years. It's my understanding this particular cemetery hasn't had service, but other ones have.
That is great.
Yeah, when I, when I was, when I was commissioner before, four years ago, whatever it was, I asked about cleaning it up, we got it cleaned up, and the people were really happy about it, so I appreciate what we do. Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Kirby is at the pool, if I thought I say pool here.
Don't confuse him with a preacher.
Amen.
Hey, I'm gonna get away with that lightning.
Can I get amen? Amen.
Lightning coming down.
Let, could he give Mr. Bosscar a update on where we are on, on, on the road that he's speaking of?
Soon as we vote on this here, we'll do that. Okay. So can I get a motion for Mr. Kirby to enter private front? The move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Okay, Mr. Kirby, can you give us an update on Pillsbury? And what, I, I, what is that, what is that little area called?
Harnell Hills.
Harnell Hills.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bosscar, I realize you've been a good customer of mine for a long time, but we can honestly say we have, we've, we're fortunate enough to land a grant, right? So this hitting county monies. That was always the challenge with securing the county monies, dirt-to-pave conversions cost over a billion dollars a mile. Mr. Williams pressed us hard, we secured a grant, we are going to pave your road, plans are ninety percent complete, permitting's there, so forth and so on, that's all. When we say we're working on something, until you see the tractors on the ground, it's hard to convince people working on something. This modern day and time, it takes us long to get ready for a job, as it does to do the job itself. We will be there in just a few months with tractors on the ground for you. Okay? Yes, sir.
Your permitting anymore takes longer than the construction.
Correct.
And the engineering and permitting, yeah.
The main gripe is with the people called DEP, so you help us complain to them, it works.
The reason we got that grant, we told them, "We're tired of Mr. Bosscar getting on our behind."
Hey, I was his commissioner for what, for about a year, two years? Gotta give it back, give it back to Ron, I don't want it.
And I wasn't his commissioner, I get the call.
Hey, hey, when I get that call, I call Ron.
Thank y'all so much.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I just have a few short items, shouldn't take very long. The first one is the crime lab, crime lab and maintenance building at the sheriff's office. As you know, Clemens Rutherford has been the firm that's been designing it. We had designed up to a point that we had funding for. Since then, the legislative appropriation came in to finish the job, so we're now asking you to, to approve the task order zero-zero-zero-six so that we can finish the design and complete the entire building.
The move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is RFP twenty-two-two-P, capital maintenance. As you remember, as we were working on how we fund the North Florida Mega Industrial Park, we looked at the possibility of an MSBU and an MSTU. Changes in the legislature caused us some delays, so the contract with this firm, TFM Financial, kind of expired, so we want to extend it a year, it won't take a year. They're finishing out the plan to present to you on how to set up, it will be an MSTU when we do it, which is a taxing. So for the sake of the public, what we're trying to do is make it so that we can have the industrial park pay for itself rather than anybody else pay for the industrial
I get a motion?
I make a motion.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
The next one's another one, it's resolution number twenty-two-three-R-dash-forty-six, creation of a regional utility working group. For the sake of clarity, because I know it gets confusing, the county is actually working with two different utility groups. One is the one with the town of Fort White and Columbia County, which we have a meeting on the thirtieth to discuss. The other one is one, people from five counties got together at the invitation of a private vendor. at the invitation of a private vendor to discuss the possibility of any regional utility cooperative efforts. And it was always kind of an informal ad hoc group. There was no real leader, nobody really setting it up. Like I said, it was originally started by a private vendor that set it up and said, hey, let's have a meeting. It's to the point where we need to make it a real group, so there is a point person, and minutes can be taken, and we can handle it just like any other public meeting to avoid confusion and just kind of make it official. And so we're asking you to approve this memorandum of understanding, or rather this resolution, twenty twenty-three R forty-six, which basically says we will participate and we'll have one commissioner participate.
You get a motion?
I make a motion, accept resolution number twenty twenty-three R dash four six.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Motion carries.
And we will be.
I think this is a big step in the right direction.
Yep, it is. And we'll be giving this same resolution to each of the five counties or the four other counties. Finally, resolution number twenty twenty-three R dash forty-seven, library fines and fees. Uh, you had a presentation from a librarian several months back where she said, if we eliminate the fees, we can actually have better service to our public. You voted to support it effective October one. So this is a revision to the library fines and fees scheduled to match that effective date of October one.
Maybe we approve resolution number two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Motion carries.
The next one is a resolution number twenty twenty-three R dash thirty-nine, a certificate of public convenience and necessity, COPCN for Century Ambulance Service. This is being necessitated because Century is, has been purchased and will become effectively owned by another company on September fourteenth. They have asked for us to redo the COPCN to reflect this ownership change.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. David, will we vote? How many COPNs do we have now in
Honestly, you don't remember.
You don't remember?
The ownership group is here if you wish to.
No, I was just, I can.
I think Joel had a comment.
Yeah, Commissioner, it used to be, uh, that we kind of arbitrarily held that number down. Uh, we went through an issue about eight years ago. We got sued, and we did some research. In fact, unless you set up a system for handing out COPCNs, you essentially have to give them. So we can set up the system if you want. There's a few counties that have it.
No, I, I.
But it's a lot. We got a lot of them now.
I know, I, I know I voted on several of them the last five years.
We used to only have two or three. Now we got a whole bunch of them.
Didn't you say maybe you could start one?
Go ahead. I'm sorry, David.
Okay, but yes, the ownership, if you want to raise your hands, is, uh, the new century, owner of the new Century Ambulance. Um, resolution twenty twenty-three R forty, certificate of public convenience and necessity, COPCN Century Ambulance Service. This is for their interfacility transport services. Same thing, they're bought by this new company. They would like the COPCNs to reflect the ownership.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Motion carries.
And an agreement for a hundred and ten kilowatt generator from the Florida Department of Emergency Management. This basically is the generator we have that we share with DEM. Um, they want to change and amend the agreement so that if there's an emergency, they can use it. Um, you know, like if there's a hurricane that hits someplace else, they could have this generator be moved for mutual aid. Other than that, we're allowed to use it anytime we need to or anytime we activate.
So move.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Like signs? David, you have one add, uh, law enforcement, uh, payroll?
Yes. Uh, my addition is from the state of Florida Department of Law Enforcement, Office of Criminal Justice Grants, and it is the grant award for the salary assistance for fiscally constrained counties. And they're asking, I'm walking it on because they just got it to me, and they're asking it be executed right away so that they can start distributing money.
So move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're gonna open up public comment, three minute comment at this time. Anybody here want to speak? I think.
We got him.
Yeah, you can come on up.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and county staff, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you for a minute. Um, I'm gonna read this short statement to you because I didn't have time to memorize it, frankly. Uh, my name's Brad Bond. My wife and I recently moved here from, um, moved here from central Florida to Columbia County. I am the broker and the owner of North Florida Commercial, Columbia County's only exclusively commercial real estate brokerage. I'm also a state certified general contractor. The reason I'm here today is I've come, it's come to my attention that Columbia County recently entered into a real estate brokerage services agreement with two agents to provide acquisition services for the county. To my knowledge, neither one of them has extensive experience in commercial real estate, construction, and/or land and building development. After attending the last county commission meeting where there was discussion of the need to acquire large tracts of land for future growth and utility expansion, not to mention the future needs of the county in terms of office and industrial facility space, I'd like to encourage the board to consider expanding the services agreement to include someone with a background in commercial real estate, construction, and land and building development. I hope the board feels this is an idea worth considering. I left an envelope, envelope that looks like this, uh, excuse me, um, at each one of your offices in your mailbox. Um, I hope you would, uh, will take the time to take a look at it, and I hope it's helpful to you. Um, I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else? Not seen anyone else. We'll close public comment at this time. Um, staff, you have anything?
Uh, just one real quick thing. During the budget process, we talked about the need for a possible adjustment to the sewer rate. Um, our calculations today indicate it will be much less than what we had told you during the last budget workshop, but I also wanted to remind you that the town of Fort White has a clause in their resolution that says they automatically raise their water rates this October by the CPI or three percent, whichever is greater. This year, the CPI, believe, is seven point zero seven percent. If they raise the rates based on their resolution, that would then have put us with differing rates between Ellisville and Fort White, so we're gonna bring it up at the next board member, board meeting, see how you would like to proceed.
David, while you're on that topic, uh, would you mind, for the public, you, the twenty-five thousand dollar, if I recall, the franchise fee that we, wait, where is you? Explain how that works and coincide with what you just said with Fort White, because, you know, increase in their rate. How much does Fort White get out of the charge plus the twenty-five thousand? Is that correct?
So the way it works is, at this point in time, the only money the town of Fort White receives from the water system is twenty-five thousand dollars a year that we promised. That's all they get.
Why would we be talking about this? Don't we have control of the rates?
No.
So one of the conditions of that agreement was that we had to follow their rate increase schedule that they'd established with, who was the outfit, the program for?
Was the.
US Water. Florida Water. They were already on a program, so we had to agree to stick with that program.
Does everybody keep that in mind when the thirtieth gets here?
Well, if we are going to do that.
One more whisper to boss.
If we decide we are going to do that, um, raise Ellisville to match the Fort White rates again like we just did, post notices in all the users' mailboxes with the bills, and then bring it back to the board as I, public hearing last time? Public hearing.
Yep.
Mr. Sheriff? No, sir, I'm fine.
Robbie?
I got one thing, uh, it's just about Halloween again, y'all. About hot dog time in Fort White. So, uh, I, I just wanna thank all the commissioners that helped last year and, uh, hope we can, uh, count on all you again this year. It will be Halloween night from, uh, six to nine. Uh, basically, we're gonna try to repeat last year and make it even bigger, so.
I hadn't ate a hot dog since then.
I hadn't put one in the bun, I tell you that. I think we give out over two thousand hot, well, I know it was over two thousand hot dogs last year, so, uh, okay, put them out, hand them out. Uh, I, I don't know how many people we had, but I would, I would say well over probably four thousand people attended the trucking. It was, uh, it was a real good, good event, turn, big turnout, and, uh, look forward to doing again this year. I want to go ahead and announce that it will be Halloween night at the Boss Hills in Fort White from, uh, six to, uh, nine. There will be bounce houses, so plenty of candy and, uh, trucks handed out. And I say it's, uh, been going on probably twelve years now, and throws every year. It's a good event.
I heard you were giving out five dollar meal. We'll be there.
They wouldn't afford to left there without two hot dogs in both back parts.
Like I say, I do appreciate y'all showing up for that event that everybody.
It was fun. It was fun.
Helped out and.
Really was.
Real good event. Lot of kids.
Yep.
Go ahead.
You done, Robbie?
I'm done. Uh, David, at this time, uh, who's our liaison dealing with the animal control people?
Uh, um, Doris is our animal control director.
Okay, but I'll be complaining. So I, I was just, uh, and I haven't had an opportunity to get with Ron because it just kind of come down this afternoon. Uh, Ron, in Ron's district, he got, he got a serious situation going on out there off Christie Road. Somebody gonna get killed. And, uh, you know, there's, uh, it, it, again, it just seems like they're getting no response whatsoever out of animal control. And I'm, you know, I just gotta question the fact that, you know, we, we, we told them what we're gonna give them, and they kind of backed off. I may be wrong, but sure as well. And, you know, then you got a man and a woman and their children, uh, and I'm sure it's not just Ron, it could possibly happen, but when you're a prisoner in your own home, and he goes out there and shoots a dog, it's gonna be, it's gonna be on front page. And I, I think, uh.
Did they, did they shoot him, or we saying?
No, it's getting real close. It's getting worse than a shooting, I can tell you that. It, I mean, the pictures.
We got an email on where they've already killed some of their.
Yes.
I ain't gonna say his name publicly here, but, but I think you, I didn't know he'd send it to you, but I'm glad he did.
Yeah. I think we got an email.
I, I have sent that address and the name over and phone number too. I haven't heard if they got a response or not.
All I do is tell them to hold on. Yep's coming.
Yep's coming.
Yep. And I, I agree, I agree with Ron, but you know, this, uh, it's just not right, you know, for a kid to, you know how it is, once a dog gets on, I mean, you look at him, that, that could be a four and a half year old young.
And I understand this is a pack of dogs, not this boy.
Yeah. Anyway, I.
I know Tom has started. Uh, is hiring his staff, is getting them trained, all getting, becoming certified, and expecting to take over that function.
Well, it can't happen soon enough, if I can.
Lord have mercy.
I ain't gonna, Lord, we're getting.
We get multiple complaints, because everybody knows we're going into business. We took a position so it doesn't get, he said, we said that we were gonna be ready mid-September as if we're working, we're gonna do a little practicing, but a couple of occasions, we kind of got in there and it got confusing. I made a conscious move, say, stop, we're in business October first. We didn't want to get into this number right here, but October first, I feel comfortable, we will be credible and responsible, and we'll be able to really handle those situations.
We, when will the officers be trained? When you think they'll be certified?
Right now. We've got, I think we've got three of the four now certified.
So when you think the training will be over with?
Another week or two.
Here, here, here is, is what, here's what I'm suggesting. Uh, they need some practice. Uh, why, why, why would we wait till October? We could eat.
Here's some practice.
We could, we could, uh, start early when, once they get trained.
Mr. Williams, we can. My concern was and is, is either we're in it a hundred percent because, I gotta be careful, I just don't know that I completely believe everything I hear, what I hear. I know for a fact that an individual called four times, it did not get a response.
They're, they're not getting responsive now. I, I call myself now. I know they're not getting responsive. I call myself. I, I know there ain't no response. Getting hung up on it.
We had, we had a, a bulldog at Winfield that moved in.
Yeah.
And we never got any response.
You know, you know, I got something to say about this.
Sure.
This animal, if these animals are threatening a four and a half year old child, or a fifteen year old child, or any other child.
Gotta do.
Were they apprised of the fact that they can defend themselves with deadly force against an animal? Do they understand that? Because I don't want them to just let a dog attack, you know, let that happen. Are they the kind of people that can handle that? Or, I mean, it, I had somebody one day tell me that a bulldog was at her back side glass, and her kid didn't go to school because that bulldog was growling, waiting on a little kid to walk out.
That's right.
Now, that's just like an intruder, a man with a gun coming at me, as far as I'm concerned. A dog that's gonna hurt your child is the same as a man with a gun, in my opinion. So I hope that they understand that if, if that comes down to that, I mean, call the sheriff's office, all that stuff, but don't let something happen to a child. It scares me to death.
The sheriff's department came out on that Monday after a week of trying to get that dog removed. The sheriff's, the sheriff's department came out on, on Monday and removed that, on the following Monday, moved the dog forward.
I ju, I just don't want a child to be hurt by an animal.
We've got a wild animal control man. Can't he take care of the wild dog that's tied up, pinned up? We, we got a vicious dog ordered someplace. If they would just even follow, try to attempt to follow it, they will not. And, you know, and I, I debated it, I, you know, I've, I've been marked the anti-dog man, and I'm not, but the, uh, we, we just give them a lot of money that we're not getting our shit. And this love affair that we got going, we're gonna house our animals, guaranteed it won't last, it won't last six months. I'm taking bets on that.
And you know, and you know, the sad part of it, it really ain't the dog's fault, it's the owner's fault, if these are dogs are owned by somebody, because.
Vicious dogs are vicious dogs.
Don't start early.
Like I said, well, it can't happen soon enough.
One more simple thing, if I could. No, yeah, I'm sorry, Ryan. Uh, Chair, uh, David, Kevin, where are we at with this liaison in between the five oh one C threes and the board? At budget time, will we have that, will we have a number? I mean, not a number, but who's gonna be handling this? I mean, it's coming, I, I just got chewed pretty good this afternoon after me and, uh, you talked, and, uh, that apparently somebody in the, in the public does a lot more than we know, the board as commissioners, because it's my understanding, there's only one community center in the whole county that's even in compliance. That's crazy.
Yes, we will address that.
We're gonna have to start treating them the way, I mean, believe it or not, this board stood strong on the baseball teams and whatever, 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 you know, that if you're not compliant, gates ain't gonna open. I think we, we, all five of us sat here and did it, and, you know, and I'm standing by that a hundred percent. I think it's, it's gonna be tough, but it's gonna make a good system in the end. But I was blown away when this, uh, young man brought my attention this afternoon that, and I'll have to verify that with Amy, but it, we're zero, you know, she's not here, of course, but, but my understanding, we got one community center in the whole town that's complying.
I will go out and find out and verify.
I mean, they, could we send, uh, they would not send the, the notices out to these people?
The letters didn't go to the community centers.
Okay, no, but, but the ball team.
But we can send them to the, to the community center. They didn't. They did not because we can send them to the community centers as well. Uh, the issue with the letter going out is there was some confusion over whether it should be signed by Joel or by somebody in our staff. Fell through the cracks at that point. Joel did, uh, contact us today and said, look, you need me to sign it. Let me know. It will be going out this week.
Well, okay.
I know there's a lot going on right now, David, and I, I fully understand that.
Staff just didn't feel that it would be as effective coming from a staff member rather than from an official.
Anything else? Motion adjourned. Thank y'all, gentlemen.